Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Here.
Mrs. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mr. Dokus?
Here.
Mrs. Kayden?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There is no executive session at this time, and so we will move into our presentation for this evening, which is highlights from our student leaders and fall athletic captains.
Good evening again, everyone. Thank you so much for coming and happy almost Thanksgiving. Tonight, we are thrilled to recognize and celebrate our senior leaders for the 24-25 school year, along with our fall athletic captains and our band and color guard captains. In a few moments, we're going to have Principal Newman and Mr. Whalen join us at the podium, and we are going to call students forward to recognize them. You see a long list of names here, alphabetized on the second and third pages of tonight's board agenda. This is the full list of, I believe, nearly 60 students at our high school who are formally serving in leadership roles this year and this fall. And so, as we conclude the fall athletic season and as we reach nearly the midpoint of the year, we thought this was a perfect opportunity to pause and thank them for their leadership so far this year and ongoing this year, and the impact that they've already had on our school and district and will continue to have going forward this year. And so, Principal Newman, Mr. Whalen, if you can come to the podium, we're going to call those students who are present tonight to come forward.
And so, while they're getting set up, so good evening, everyone. Aligned with our Vision 2026 strategic plan, as a district, we seek to increase opportunities for students to influence school climate, culture, and overall school life. And so, the Senior Leadership Academy is an honors class designed to give seniors an opportunity to exercise and strengthen leadership skills. Seniors work with their advisors to engage students in the freshman class. They're expected to create and teach lessons and to help develop a nurturing environment for their younger peers. Seniors are also expected to be enthusiastic, complete all of their assignments, and communicate with teachers while also modeling positive behavior both inside and outside of school and taking initiative to generate ideas to help best support their younger peers. In addition to all of these, between being students, between being friends and peers, they also provide mentorship and support, not just at the high school, but also in our elementary schools, pouring into the next generation of Collingswood students. And so, this evening is just an opportunity for us to recognize the class of 2025 senior leaders for their tremendous campus leadership and commitment to service within our Collingswood community. And so, while they get set up, could we just give them preemptively just a round of applause for their collective efforts?
Okay, first is Ms. Regan Burke. Dylan Corey. On the drums, Robbie Latini. Graham Reynolds. Noah Savarino De Pra. Angelina Stewart. Macy Street. And Amy Wasikowski. Is there anybody that is here that I didn't call? Just want to check if anyone came in late. Okay, thank you, everybody.
And so, in addition, we also felt that it was appropriate, based on the rich tradition and pride of our student athletes, and specifically our captains, our team captains, who put it all together. And so, we're getting ready to also honor and acknowledge our team captains for their tremendous campus leadership, both on and off the field. And so, hot off the presses, just during the fall season, based on their efforts and their teammates, the boys and girls soccer teams were the 2024 division champions this year. The girls volleyball team was recognized as the 2024 Burlington County Scholastic League Conference Sportsmanship recipient. And this is given, based on all of the officials within the league, voting on who demonstrated the leadership characteristics most attainable and most admirable. And our students won that award. Multiple teams, including girls soccer, volleyball, and field hockey, made it through multiple rounds of the state playoffs. We also have multiple student athletes playing in senior All-Star games for their respective sports, and we just wanted to publicly acknowledge and congratulate all of our teams for representing our community well.
All right, so congratulations again to all of our senior leaders and athletic captains. That's quite a long list, and congrats to all of them. Before we go into Committee of the Whole, we did want to take, go a little bit out of order to allow for the student report, which is usually Section 9. I'm going to guess it still is Section 9, to the Student Board Rep Report. If, Daimir, if you want to do that now.
Hello. My name's Diego Lopez Dotel. I am a senior at Collingswood High School, and I am the board representative for Woodland. And today, I will be sharing with you the news and things that have been going on around the school. So, first of all, we had our theater program had two beautiful functions in November the 1st, in November the 2nd. The functions were an evening of comedy, which consisted of three different blocks. This is a test, check please, and promagedon. Then, and I think, based on what I've heard, people really liked it. We also recently had a social justice bake sale, and the profit made was donated to charity. Spanish Club today also had a bake sale. They were selling stuff. I think the profit was gone to their own fund, which they will be using to make their own events around the school to celebrate Hispanic culture and different events around the year. Student Boys will be, they've been making moves and trying to set up some bullet points of what they want to do this year. I'm pretty sure they will meet with the board next month. And that's directed by Ms. Lawellin, Ms. Romero, and Ms. Brasov. Also, the Wellness Center is trying to get a student support group done to help support the mental health of the students around the school. Thank you.
Great job, Diego. Thank you, and I apologize for calling you, Daimir. I was looking at the wrong name plate, so apologies. Okay, so thank you for that. We are moving on to Section 4, Committee of the Whole. Motion to enter Committee of the Whole. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so at this time, I am going to turn things over to Kate Seltzer, who is going to run Committee of the Whole for us.
And as folks are leaving, thank you again for coming. Have a great night. All right, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. So, the Committee of the Whole tonight is just going to be reviewing a few things that came up at our November Board Roundtable, which I see a couple of people who are here tonight were there, so thank you for coming to both. And so, we thought we would just raise two issues that emerged from that conversation, which we had a great turnout. We even had some student representation at that Board Roundtable, which was great. And it is in line with some of the conversations we've been having since last month's presentation, which was on the testing data from our, from Windsor Yamamoto. So, we, you know, between that testing presentation and our Board Roundtable on academics, we thought we would just raise some of the ideas that came up for that. So, one of the things we heard was excitement and appreciation and gratitude for what was going to be happening with DIBELS assessments and MAP assessments. So, I wanted to open it up to the board to ask any questions that you have about the rollout of those processes and assessments, anything you want to ask particularly Ms. Hal Turner about those, since they're in the process of being rolled out. So, we can maybe start there and then move on.
My question, given that this will be information that parents will have going into, particularly at the elementary level, what type of guidance or work are we doing with teachers to help make the, make those reports make sense to parents in conferences?
Thank you for your question, Matt. Just sort of the broader context here, although we've spoken about it many times at this point, Matt is referring to our new K-5 universal screener for reading. It's called DIBELS. It's given three times a year with interim progress monitoring along the way for some subsets of students. And it's part of our broader implementation of science of reading strategies at the K-5 elementary level with our literacy program. And so, Matt's specific question was regarding how the information will be shared with families. And so, at the upcoming December 9th through 12th report card conferences at all of our elementary schools, in addition to the report cards that are traditionally shared at those conferences, students' fall DIBELS reports will be shared with families, along with progress monitoring, if it applies to those students. And so, this is an opportunity for teachers and families to sit together and review their students' overall performance in all subject areas and then to do a more specific kind of deep dive into their reading assessment from this fall.
Can you, can you just clarify for everyone, when you refer to progress monitoring, but that wouldn't be for every student? So, what does that look like and what does that mean for families?
Yep. So, if students were scored at benchmark or above level, essentially, for the different indicators in the assessment, they would not receive any ongoing progress monitoring between the testing windows, fall, winter, spring. But for students who had any lower areas, the teachers then give a follow-up assessment to ensure appropriate growth is occurring along the way in the interim weeks between the fall and winter assessments, in this case, and can share that information directly with families so that they know how to continue to support at home as well as in the classroom.
Is it, because this is a new, because DIBELS is new to Collingswood, and because parent-teacher conferences are short, and obviously, you know, the information that's shared there is going to be much more than just DIBELS, obviously, is it, would it be possible for some sort of, some screencastify or a short video or something explaining DIBELS to families to go out? Just so that they understand, like, how it's going to change over the year? Because, you know, DIBELS, the, what's being asked of students changes over the year, so, you know, they don't get the same thing over the year. So, it just might be helpful so that teachers don't have to use their important time at parent-teacher conferences to kind of explain that. And they can just explain the data and then kind of move on to all the other things that they have to talk about?
We are, we are on the same page, yes. So, when, when we share out our family message about conferences in the next few days, that's explicitly a part of it, just so that we can kind of do some pre-work before we sit down. Because you're right, the conference goes very fast, and there's a lot of questions and information to cover.
Can I just ask, how long does it take between when they get, when they take the test and when we get the results? Because this was, the first was, test was given in September, correct? And we just got them in November. Is that typical?
So, the great news about both DIBELS and MAP assessment is that unlike a lot of the other assessments that our kids take across the course of a year, particularly state testing like NJSLA, where it's months and months between when you take the test and when you get the results, DIBELS and MAP is all available almost, almost immediately. And so, it allows for, it allows for teachers to be a lot more reactive in real time and make strategic decisions in real time.
I wanted to say, excuse me, that I really appreciated the feedback I got about my fourth grader. It was extremely helpful. I spent some time going over the website and went over some of the site suggestions of different strategies that we can implement at home to kind of help towards some of those goals. So, I found it very easy to navigate and very, very helpful. So, thank you.
I wanted to ask kind of a broader question about where you see the, like, the use of this data over time? So, like, how can we expect these assessments to inform not just what happens now for individual students, but, you know, what, how are teachers and how are building leaders using this information kind of more broadly?
I, it kind of, yes, I love that question. It kind of aligns with what I was sharing with, saying or response to Sarah's question a moment ago. So, rather than having to wait months to receive data that is by that point outdated and then we're just being reactionary to it, this allows us to be very strategic in the moment and to make strategic plans on an ongoing basis in a proactive way in responsive to real-time data, to be more strategic and thoughtful about how we support our kids, how we group our students, how we modify assignments to make them accessible for students. And then, like, particularly with regards to the lags between state testing data, when we take it and when it returns. For example, we're right in the midst of budget planning and discussions for next year, right? By the time that state testing data comes back in mid-July, we are already all the way well past budget season, and all of those decisions have been sort of made and plans have been in place. And so, one of the things that makes me most excited about having this data available on an ongoing basis will allow us to see trends across the, across the district, across student groups, and to be much more strategic as we're going through that winter budget process, as we're doing right now. So, that part makes me particularly excited.
Just one, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but, you know, the great thing about these assessments too is it allows us to track student growth over the course of the year. So, you know, if it's, if it's possible, it would be great to share some of that data during the board meetings, so that we're moving beyond just the state testing and that one snapshot, but for us to have the chance to see how students, you know, K all the way on up, do over the course of the year. So, perhaps a mid-year after the winter benchmarking, see, all right, here's where we started in the fall, here's where we are now. I think it would be meaningful for the board and the community.
And since we've mostly been talking about DIBELS, maybe we can also just touch on MAP assessments? And, you know, maybe that's because a few of us have elementary-age children, but we can also talk about the MAP testing as well, perhaps?
So, just do a kind of the process, and then I'll get into it a little more specifically. So, NWEA MAP is our new 6th through 12th grade universal screener for both ELA and math. The secondary admin team and I spent a lot of time together this morning getting all of the logistics organized in order to do our first testing window, which will be coming up in December 4th through the 13th. In a typical year, we would take a beginning-of-the-year, mid-year, end-of-year MAP assessment. Our implementation was a little bit later coming this year. And so, our first testing window will be coming up right after the Thanksgiving holiday. And again, very similar to what I said regarding DIBELS, we're excited to have actionable live data to use to make strategic plans for kids. It's also highly predictive data and gives very accurate previews of how students might be predicted, may be predicted to perform on state standardized tests, ACT, SAT, PSAT, et cetera. And so, I envision us having a lot of fun digging into this data.
Will, will the results of those be sent, be shared with families as well? Or is that not quite the same as an elementary situation?
Yeah, the hope is that in both instances, the more that we can empower families to have an understanding of how their kids are successful currently and where their growth areas are currently. You know, parents are our partners in this work. We have to collaborate with families, and so, yes, the same, the same mindset is there.
A quick question on the DIBELS assessment, since it's the one that we've already started with. What has the feedback been from the elementary teachers on the use of this tool?
I'm in elementary classrooms almost, almost every day, watching instruction live in the moment, watching the teaching in action. I saw progress monitoring happening today in a third-grade classroom. And then, I hear feedback both directly from teachers as well as flung up through their principals to me. I would say, in general, it's a easy-to-assess, gets data quickly. We bought the full M-class, is the name of the full data platform that goes along with it, so that teachers have access to see a full dashboard of their, of their class individually and as a whole. And so, all of those things, I would say, are the positives that we've heard so far. As with any new program, we were learning a new, learning a new program, figuring out the bumps along the way with implementation at the start of the year. And so, certainly, there were questions and needs that bubbled up along the way that we've been troubleshooting throughout.
Just a logistics question about the MAP assessment data, since I assume the results will come after conferences. Is there a plan for disseminating that information to families?
Well, MAP is for 6th through 12 only.
I didn't, okay.
But yes.
Sorry.
Well, playing off Sarah's question, how will that information be relayed to parents?
We'll work through with building leaders, guidance counselors, et cetera, to turnkey that information.
Is the plan also to share any of that feedback with the students themselves, since they've got a bit more agency in, in what they could do with that information than a typical elementary kid might have?
One of the, one of the best parts about MAP, I think, is exactly that. It's all growth-based data. And so, in a typical setting, when you're talking about kids' performance, it's often about who is the highest in the class and who is the lowest in the class and where were you in comparison, did you get an A or did you not? So, I think in a lot of senses, it's kind of tricky to navigate how we share data like that with kids directly. And certainly, we find creative and thoughtful ways to do that. But because MAP is all growth-based, it's a really easy way to publicly talk about kids and celebrate kids really openly and honestly, directly to, you know, individuals, but also as a, as a group. Because typically, kids who have the most room to grow are the ones that are going to have the highest amounts of growth. And so, it's a really fun way to publicly, publicly acknowledge kids, get them motivated about understanding, like, where they're at currently, what skills they need to work on before the next testing window. So, I've seen a lot of great things done in, in that regard with empowering kids to understand their, sort of their pathway.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, thank you very much, Meredith, for all of that great information. Just one more thing that we wanted to share that came up at the roundtable that we are not going to talk about in depth right now, but we're sort of thinking about it as a board, and we will be talking about it both at the January retreat that we have every year as well as a future roundtable in the spring, is that we had a conversation about really working on retention of students in district after middle school. So, really thinking about some of the issues that have been raised to us as board members individually. These are conversations we know are going on. It's on our radar. It's something that's very important to all of us, and we're really looking forward to digging into it and then opening it up to community input in the spring for a roundtable. So, this is just another plug for these roundtables. They're, I think those who come, you know, have given us feedback that they're good conversations. They're much more informal, right, than, than public board meetings, and it's just a really nice small-group conversation. So, we probably will not have one in December because of all of the events that are going on, but we will keep you informed about future roundtable dates. Okay?
All right, thank you, everyone. Motion to exit Committee of the Whole.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Speaking of the, all of the things that are going on in December, we're moving on to Section 5, Future Dates and Miscellaneous Information. You can see there all of the wonderful winter events, from winter concerts to singing on the avenue, that are taking place in the next month. So, please be sure to check some of those things out. Section 6, Routine Business. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2024 regular board meeting. And a second? All in favor? This brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional, more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity to everyone in attendance. And in fairness, in fairness, excuse me, to all who wish to speak, there's a strict three-minute time limit during public comment. Ms. Coleman will have her timer ready. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. So I noticed on the agenda, there's a new consultant for diversity, equity, and inclusion. I know that previously there had been a different consultant group that was used and that this appears to be new training. I'd like to hear more about what that is during the, during the committee presentation there. And specifically like whether any kind of, whether it's trying to like build again any kind of group among faculty and staff that's really focused on, on this. I think it's really important to have a lot of buy-in to this work because it's so important. I do think it's, it's an important and a good priority. On the other hand, I understand that there are ongoing budget struggles and I would wonder if there's also any attempts that have been made to find other funding sources for, for things like this. Because while, like I said, I do think it is a priority and something that, that we should be spending money on, it also is a chunk of money. And I, you know, would like to see things like this done, you know, as much as possible outside of, I guess, the normal budget process. Yes, that was what I had. Thank you.
My name is Mr. Goldberg, music teacher at the Garfield and Tatum Elementary Schools here in Collingswood. I am here today proudly speaking on behalf of the district music teachers, Ms. Carlson, Mr. Gross, Mr. Hartung, Ms. Intricasso, Ms. Ludwig, and myself. It is the mission of the Collingswood Public Schools District's Music Department to provide every Collingswood student the opportunity to grow through a high-quality, ability-appropriate, universally accessible music education that inspires the continuing study of music. Coming up next month, you can look forward to a packed season of performances. Join Tatum and Garfield as they honor diversity and inclusivity in their winter concert production of Holidays Around the World. Zane North, Newby, Sharp, and Garfield Elementary Schools storm the stairs of the old Zane North Building in their annual Singing on the Avenue Community Presentations. Roles are then reversed and hilarity ensues in the middle school musical Freaky Friday. Finally, our most experienced singers take the stage in Collingswood High School's winter concert. For details, feel free to reach out to your school music teacher. I am now thrilled to announce that it has been another record-breaking year of elementary instrument enrollment. A decade ago, only 40% of eligible students across the district were enrolled in the elementary instrument lesson program. After a decade of steady growth since then, that number is now more than doubled at a remarkable 86% enrollment. A special shout out to Mr. Gross for his school, Zane North, which this year has reached the jaw-dropping milestone of 100% enrollment. Every fourth and fifth grader at Zane North, including all those who receive special services, is taking instrument lessons this year. Mr. Gross's determination to create a program for all students is what led to the creation of our scholarship instrument program. This program has been collecting band and orchestra instrument donations from the community for the purpose of lending out to families who would be disproportionately burdened by the standard rental fee. Back when we originally started this program 10 years ago, the music team was only able to help six families in need. Last year, we helped over 40 families in need, but wait, this year, the music team awarded school-owned instruments to over 70 families in need. Every student who wanted to learn an instrument this year is now learning an instrument. For anyone interested in contributing an instrument or funds to the scholarship program, please reach out to your school music teacher. Thank you.
I want to be him when I grow up, by the way. Great. Oh my God, phenomenal. I'm Mrs. Tanner, I'm an English teacher over at the high school, and I appreciate how difficult rolling out new testing platforms are. It is, I really don't need it, but that's okay. I know that it's incredibly, incredibly difficult. And I applaud the idea of having more data out there, but from a teacher perspective, the MAP testing rollout has been a bit of a black box, which we haven't been given the key to. We were told, we went to an in-service that was really more of an ad. We were supposed to, in that in-service, be told how to use the plethora of data, because when we had MAP testing before, that was the problem. There was so much data and we really didn't know what to look at. The in-service never got to that part. They never showed us how to set up our classes. When I spoke to somebody else who was a new teacher, they said, oh, well, I didn't have to set up my classes when we used MAP testing, it was done by the tech department. I'm supposed to start testing on the 4th, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. I don't, I haven't been in there to play around yet. All of the links that were part of the presentation were blocked because of the ad blocker. So we couldn't even see any of it. And we got the invitation to start doing it today and we were told that there was going to be more information coming. I already have all next month planned, like I really want to plan. And I do feel like that there's this pressure that I'm supposed to give this test and then know what to do with this data when I haven't been given access to that information. And I'm supposed to start doing it on the 4th. So while I love data, I mean, I teach AP, I roll around those numbers all the time, I roll around, I do the appeal, I have all, I mean, I love data. But I feel like I'm, I'm being asked to do something that I haven't really been explained. So I feel a little lost. And it is nobody's fault. I know that there were tech issues and then there were rollout issues and I understand that. And I do applaud getting this data because it's super important, but from a teacher's perspective, this is incredibly stressful place to be, for me to be standing right now, to know that on Tuesday, I am expected to do something that I don't know if the classes have been set up. Do I have to set them? I don't know. And I, like I said, I plan a month in advance, I'm really not good with not knowing. So, and again, I understand that you're doing everything you can, but unless we're going to be giving that data, we may want to push back the start date, just from like a logistical point of view. Thank you so much.
Okay. I know, Dr. McDowell, you wanted to clarify one of the things about the, the item, agenda item about the building capacity grant.
So with the building capacity grant in, in response to Mr. Rossi, that particular item will be tabled for the November board meeting, it'll be placed back on the agenda for December. The board wanted more time in order to dig into some of the very questions that you were asking for. And so you also referenced about funding, and so there is no line item for any of the equity or the extra training, support, or innovative items that we've done for the last several years. All of those initiatives, including what you heard about earlier from our student representative, the Elevating Student Voice work, that is all grant-funded, large in part based on the grant team at our middle and our high school that have gone out and helped us bring in additional revenues. And so all of these new initiatives are not in the general fund budget, they're all grant, grant-funded.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. And Ms. Howell Turner, did you want to speak to the MAP testing piece perhaps?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Eli and the music teachers for that wonderful overview of the upcoming programs.
I do wish Mr. Goldberg could just do all of the speaking for us because I think it would be so much more engaging, so I just could listen to you all day long.
And Eli shared the 100% outcome at Zane, but I happen to know that he could have shared at every elementary school over the last five to seven years, significant growth from 40 and 50%, I'm giving ballpark here, but 40 and 50 percentile participation rates to well above 80. Am I right on that, in that range? Thank you. So just yes to Z100, but great outcomes for our participation across our entire elementary program leading into our middle school and high school program. So I just first wanted to say thank you for lifting that up, Eli, and thank you to the music department leading that, leading those efforts. Karen, thank you for your questions about MAP, I appreciate your questions. A couple just quick, quick reactions and responses. So the testing window is starting on the 4th, which is the Wednesday after we come back from the break, so we built in just a little bit more of a buffer to give the, the school administrators time to build out all of the testing sessions, which was in action this morning.
Does she have to do that?
No, ma'am.
That's a beautiful question.
Her question was, does she have to build the testing sessions? And the answer is no. So we, we were implementing all of the tech, tech logistics this morning to get that all in order. A detailed but user-friendly how-to document is coming out tomorrow, I'll say before the Thanksgiving holiday, to make sure that you have everything in order going into, to the break. And then there'll be those two days for prep following when we return on the second and the third. But essentially, from a teacher's perspective, for those who are here tonight or are listening at home, you'll log in through Clever, click your 12th grade English class and start, begin testing session. And the students have an icon on their desktop that will begin as well. So I'll just say that Oakland is also piloting MAP testing in their district, third, fourth, and fifth grade this year. And they, we had, we strategically had them test first. Thank you to our partners in Oakland. They have less than 150 students to test and we have 1,209 students who will test at the sixth through 12th grade level. So they went ahead and did the, jumped in last week and it's been a very, very smooth testing session thus far. And so I feel very confident that you'll feel the same, Karen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Howell Turner. Moving on to section eight, the superintendent's report, Dr. McDowell will present.
So good evening again. Section 8.01 is the enrollment report. October 2023 is 2256. October 2024 is 2221, and that report is attached. 8.02, 3, and 4 are the safety drill, suspension, and anti-bullying report. And I have just a few announcements to be, to, to accompany that. And so first and foremost, we, this is what we are calling the season of gratitude. Gratitude is a feeling of thankfulness and appreciation for the good things in life, and we hope that all families in our school community are well and looking forward to this extended break. Before the hustle and bustle of the holiday season begins to take hold, we would like to pause to reflect on all of the positives that continue to take place in each of our schools. We'd also like to express our sincere thanks and gratitude for the tremendous efforts that so many are displaying, this particular marking term. As we reflect on our school year so far, it is not surprising to acknowledge the collective work of students and staff. As we shift our focus from academic recovery to rigorous instruction, I've had the opportunity to visit our schools and observe meaningful progress taking place daily. So despite the challenges that our schools face, our students are hopeful and actively engaged in their future. And during this specific season, we'd also like to highlight some of the other things that our students are engaged in. Our character strong implementation, which is our new SEL curriculum at the elementary level, has been a positive addition. Schools kicked off the year with kindness and they are now focusing on what it means to be grateful. There have been wonderful conversations taking place across all of our campuses and we would like to specifically highlight, bless you, highlight the work of the elementary wellness team for leading this important work. We'd also like to highlight Pyjama Day. Many of our elementary schools annually support this time-honored tradition of a Pyjama Day fundraiser with all proceeds going to CHOP. Please see your child's school for details. We'd also like to acknowledge the Buildings and Grounds crew for their holiday food drive. They are actively collecting donations in partnership with students in each building November 4th through December 13th of non-perishable food items to help Collingswood, Oakland, and Woodland families during the holidays. Deliveries will take place on Saturday, December 21st. The Collingswood High School Interact Club will partner with the Collingswood Education Association for Pictures with Santa on December 7th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Collingswood Community Center. The cost for participation is two non-perishable items, with proceeds benefiting the local food bank. Please bring your own cameras. And the Interact Club is also collecting socks for the homelessness with their Happy Feet initiative. They're accepting new unused socks and donations until December 16th, with all proceeds going to local homeless shelters, with the main recipient being the Joseph's House in Camden. And so we would just like to honor and thank our students for their commitment and service to our communities. We'd also like to just to give another reminder, which we'll be putting this out in addition this week, is that all schools will dismiss early on Wednesday, November 27th, with the districts being closed Thursday and Friday to observe Thanksgiving. Elementary conferences will also be taking place and you will get more information from your child's school about sign up and reserve time. Our new elementary biking policy began on Monday, November 11th, with elementary students now being able to bike to school and enjoy their newfound freedom. We would like to thank our Buildings and Grounds crews for preparing schools to safely receive new riders. And a special thanks to the Collingswood Police Department for their increased presence during arrival and dismissal as students travel to and from school. If you are a family in need of a bike helmet or, or need to know if the helmet that you have is fitting properly, please reach out to Cross County Connection. November is National Native American Heritage Month, and it is celebrated to honor the culture, traditions, and achievement of Native Americans, Alaska natives, Native Hawaiians, and affiliated island communities. Interactive classroom resources were curated for our students by our elementary media specialist, Ms. Havistas. And additional displays and reading selections honoring Indigenous Americans at the Library Media Center at the middle school and high school were curated by our secondary media specialist, Ms. Madden. The Collingswood and Oakland CPAG, in partnership with the special services team, welcomes all schools to participate in Inclusive Schools Week, December 2nd through December 6th. This district-wide initiative is an important step towards our goal of making our school communities more inclusive. Grade-level appropriate guides have been developed and outline daily themes, discussion questions, and classroom activities for teachers to complete with students each day. And we look forward to all students and all schools participating in this initiative. And so what are the goals of Inclusive Schools Week? It's one, is to celebrate the progress of schools in educating an increasingly diverse student population, acknowledge the hard work and commitment of schools, families, and communities in creating inclusive opportunities for all children, regardless of disability, gender, ethnicity, language, health status, or et cetera. Encourage reflection on how culture, policies, and practices in schools can promote inclusive education and then to promote action to increase capacity of schools and communities to meet the needs of all learners. On November 19th, we are pleased to announce that 41 Collingswood High School students were inducted into the National Honor Society. The National Honor Society is one of the oldest, largest, and most widely recognized co-curricular student organizations in American high schools with 1.4 million members. The purpose of the National Honor Society is to create enthusiasm for scholarship, to recognize outstanding students, to stimulate a desire to render service, to promote leadership, and to develop character. Membership in local chapters is an honor bestowed upon a student by the faculty council and is based on four pillars of the National Honor Society: scholarship, character, leadership, and service. And so we will be sending out the names of all of our new inductees, the 41, 11th, and 12th graders, to be able to recognize this outstanding group of students, and we just would like to congratulate them for this exceptional accomplishment. You heard earlier about our senior leaders, but we wanted to continue to promote that we have a talented group of student leaders that are doing lots of positive things on our campus, but we would also like to acknowledge all of our advisors. First, advisor for the National Honor Society, Ms. McDevitt, and the senior leader advisors, Mr. Laramore and Mr. Adams, for supporting all of our students with all of these amazing activities. In addition to our, our coaches that are supporting our young student athletes. Also aligned with our Vision 2026 strategic plan is our focus and our efforts of helping all students reach their full potential while preparing them for post-secondary success through a very holistic approach. Over the last three years, we have implemented SAT School Day to better inform plans to increase student access to advanced coursework. On October 22nd, 660 Collingswood High School students participated in SAT School Day and will be receiving their performance reports shortly. These reports will help to identify areas of strength as well as growth as our students pursue academic proficiency and college and career readiness. Schools have also received AP potential reports identifying additional students who could also benefit from their participation. also benefit from their participation in advanced coursework. Just a few statistics. For the 23-24 school year, Collingswood High School offered 17 Advanced Placement Courses in addition to a series of credit-bearing dual enrollment courses in partnership with multiple colleges and universities. For the 23-24 school year, Collingswood High School had its highest advanced placement participation and performance in five years, with 75% of all AP students earning qualifying scores for college credit. For the 24-25 school year, Collingswood High School is currently offering 20 Advanced Placement Courses across all content areas. And so we would like to publicly acknowledge our advanced students, as well as to thank our counselors, as well as our AP teachers for continuing to move our students in a positive direction. And finally, we would just like to send just a gentle reminder that the 2024 Collingswood Holiday Parade is back on the Avenue on Saturday, November 30th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Named the Best Main Street Experience in South Jersey Magazine, with lively entertainment, marching bands, dancers, holidays. Our schools and marching band will be represented at the event. The parade will begin at Zane Avenue and continue to West Linden Avenue through historic Collingswood. Please come out to support our students for this time-honored tradition. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Moving along to Section 10, because we had the student report earlier, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report by Ms. Coleman.
Alrighty. 10.01 is a listing of your October 2024 monthly budget transfers. 10.02 is your October 2024 Board Secretaries' Report and Treasurer's Report. 10.03 is your Food Service Financial Statement for October. 10.04 is the listing of the purchase orders that have been issued through the month of November. And 10.05 is the listing of the bills that will be paid tomorrow morning pending approval tonight. And 10.06 is the Student Activity Cash Report.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Moving on to the next section, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig will present.
Thank you. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. Committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Tonight, we are seeking approval for the following items. 11-2 to 11-9 is the Board Secretary's Report, as it was just presented. 11-10, we are going to be asking to table. Do I have to read in what it is?
I just need a motion and a second to table, and then I'm going to roll call to move it off the agenda.
Okay. Do that now?
Yeah, might as well.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to table, item 11-10. Second.
Second?
Who, I mean, who seconded? You didn't think it?
Chris and I.
Chris?
Oh, okay.
I guess if I made the motion.
Oh, he made the motion. He seconded it. We're all good.
Got you. Okay. All right, with the roll call.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey? And like Dr. McDowell said, this will be back on the agenda for December.
So 11-11 is approval of free therapy and SEL instruction and group session, youth group sessions in the Wellness Center provided by NJ4S through the Center for Family Services. 11-12 is a shared service agreement with Clementon. 11-13 and 14 are tuition agreements for displaced students in Mount Laurel and Camden, respectively. 11-15, thank you to Ms. Patterson. I believe she is here, but donated a clarinet and a flute to Newby. And then 11-16 and 11-17 are use of facility requests for Collingswood recreational basketball and wrestling. So seeking approval for items 11-2 to 11-17.
Motion to approve said items. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
Quick question about 11-15. Those donations are the same, just when Mr. Goldberg was talking about the number of donations that we had gotten, I just want to make sure that we are acknowledging those?
Yeah, normally the day after, we send a letter. This way, if they want to put down their tax return, as I guess that donation, they have a document from the school district.
Yeah, just again, publicly, if they are willing to, I'd like to celebrate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I have one question. I just want to confirm that you just said to Wayne that, you know, we tabled that, but it is grant-funded when it's on the budget for next, where's the, what grant are we using for that? Just out of curiosity.
The Wellness Center, carryover funds.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 12, the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Sherman will present.
Okay, first time here. Okay. The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and school calendar. First, there's a number of field trips, 12.02, elementary school field trips, including walking field trips. 12.03 is middle school field trips, including the Community Center trip, which I believe is next month. 12.04 is the high school field trips. There's several trips planned, including trips for the 18 to 21-year-old program, a holiday trip for the choir. 12.5 to 12.7 are out-of-district and home instruction placements for students. 12.8 to 12.9 are out-of-district placements for students. 12-10 is the Big Wow Flare Dance Company Visit. Sorry, I know that's not as big as Rogers' excitement for that, but we'll do it instead. This is for the pre-K program. 12.11 and 12.12 are Sharp After-School Programs. One is the After-School Program, and the second is Let Grow Play Program, funded by Title I Funds. 12.13 is the 2025 to 2026 Preschool Plan and Projected Enrollment from the New Jersey Department of Education, the Office of Early Childhood Education. And so I'm seeking approval of items 12.2 through 12.10, sorry, 12.10 through, yeah.
You're good. You did it. Almost did it without any issues. So yeah, so it's 12.02 to 12.13 tonight. Motion to approve said items.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, with exceptions when required.
Mr. Dilkus?
Yes, except where required to abstain.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Section 13, the Personnel Committee. Ms. Sheridan Celia will present.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. This evening, we're seeking approval of items 13.02 through 13.22. Items 13.02 through 13.07 are resignations of faculty and staff. 13.8, point 08 through 13.09 are two different leaves. 13.10 is approval of a preschool teacher. 13.11, approval of a high school special education teacher. At 13.12, we have a long-term substitute and replacement teacher, as well as at 13.13. 13.14 are appointment of one elementary pre-permanent substitute. 13.15 is the Mental Health Screening Grant, the appointment of a mental health endless screener for the current school year. 13.16, the Culture and Climate Grant Positions, with the ESS staff to work with the Culture and Climate Center this year. At 13.17 and 13.18, call back to the prior approvals for Sharp's programs for the Let Grow Play and After-School Programs. That's at both 13.17, the appointment of staff, and at 13.18, the approval of the program organizers and directors for both of those programs. At 13.19 and 13.20 are high school and middle school athletic assistants and volunteer coaches, respectively. 13.21, the approval of two new substitutes, four, I'm sorry, four substitutes and tutors. And finally, at 13.22, I think we have one item on the travel expenses for this month. So I'm seeking approval this evening of items 13.02 through 13.22.
Thank you. Motion to approve said items. So moved. And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, with exceptions where required.
Mr. Dilkus?
Yes, except where required to abstain.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Section 14, the Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee. Ms. Seltzer will present.
The Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. We have one policy up for a first read at 14.02, and that is 9181, Volunteer Athletic Coaches and Co-Curricular Activity Advisors and Assistants. No big changes there, just some revised language and what seems to be a change in protocol regarding TB testing. At 14.03, we have two policies up for a second reading. Those were on the agenda last month. And 14.04, we have four regulations up for one reading, and no big changes, again, in those policies. Same idea regarding TB testing revisions, 3160 and 4160, physical examination. And 5200, there is a new excused absence category. Students in grades 6 to 12, up to once per year, can attend a civic event as an excused absence. So I am seeking approval for items 14.02 to 14.04.
Thank you. Motion to approve said items. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, with exceptions where required.
Mr. Dilkus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 15, Miscellaneous. 15.01 is the recommendation to appoint Joe Gersick as the Compliance Action Officer for 504s for the 24-25 school year. And 15.02 is the approval of the previous month's, so October's, anti-bullying report. Need to have a motion to approve 15.01 and 15.02. And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. I apologize that I overlooked this. Did we not have someone for this 15.01, or was, is this a new?
We did. We just, we didn't do official board action, so he's been, he's been serving in the role.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 16, our second opportunity for public comment. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members or administrators. We will be actively listening and taking notes. I think everybody's heard my speech by now. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a three-minute time limit. Ms. Coleman has her timer. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Grant Knutts, and I live on 120 East Madison Ave. So my thing was, so at the like round, at the like round, what's, round table, at the round table meeting, at that, there was another issue that I don't think Kate mentioned. It was the thing about the teacher shortage, because I feel like last year, there was all these, like specialist teachers, from what I know, and now this year, at Garfield, I only have like one. And last year, we had like three, four, and now we only have one. And we're just losing all that, because I think when we had more, the opportunity to give less on, like, less on all the teachers' minds and everything all the time, I think it was a lot easier when we had more specialist teachers all around.
Thank you, Grant.
It's really okay. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. I mean, I could, I could, you know, hi, I'm, my name is Tom Howard. I live at 16 Fraser Avenue. I just wanted to say a few words about actually something that said last board meeting, at the very end, and Miss Kayden made a comment, commenting about sort of the ten, the tone and whatnot of meetings. And I agree that sometimes things get heated, and I don't envy the position that you guys are in as, as board members, but at the same time, I was a little taken aback, because it sounded like there was some, a little bit of admonishment of people being civically engaged. There was a comment about not remembering growing up, not knowing who board members were, who superintendents were, and then a lot of people in our community now obviously know that. And I, same thing with me, when I grew up, I didn't, I knew who my superintendent was, but I didn't really know anything about the board members. But I think it's a good thing that people know who everybody is, because it's better to have a civically engaged public than a disinterested public. And true, sometimes emotions can run high and sometimes can go over the edge, but it's also understandable why people sometimes get upset, because you're talking about children, you're talking about their future, you have the, you know, major, many issues that, that we've had in our district, from the racial tensions to the teachers without a contract now for all the way into the school year, to the, obviously, the various points of view with the referendum. It's understandable people get upset, and it's not an excuse to be, to attack people personally, and that should never be the case. But I think we should be encouraging people to be civically engaged rather than kind of doing the opposite. And, and also, you know, you guys all ran for, for office, and so when you run for office, I mean, you become a face for the district, and that means people can question, and people should question, and of course, they shouldn't obviously go over the line. But I know you guys are volunteers in the sense you're not getting paid, but everybody did, everybody who was a board member did run and did seek to run and volunteer to run and wanted to run for, for the best interest of the school. So I'm hoping that in the future, we do have a better tone, but also, we don't want to discourage people from coming out and voicing their concerns and their problems, because, you know, people have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of care, and that's a good thing. So thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Moat, who's resigning. She was very instrumental in helping my older two children at Mark Newby through some challenges that they had, and I just wanted to thank her for all her service and her time at Mark Newby, and we wanted to let her know that we really appreciate her and we're going to miss her. Thank you.
Moving on to Section 17, motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. And a second?
Second.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.